I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the Town of Kensington Town Council Meeting, Monday, March 14th, 2022. So the first item on the agenda is the moment of silence. I just want to let people know of the passing of longtime Kensington resident on Farragut Avenue, John McKenna, who passed away on February 26th. Hope everyone will lift up his wife, Meg, and their four children in your thoughts and prayers. Is there anyone else that we are... Darren, did you want to add anything? You knew John. You had any other comments?
No, I would just say that they were, you know, they're great neighbors. You know, this, this death comes upon, it comes, you know, not too long after they rebuilt their house, which burned and was totaled a couple of years, right in the beginning of the pandemic. So, you know, it's, it's been a long trying time for them.
Yeah, I think they just moved in last summer. Is that correct?
They did, yeah.
Yeah. So, well, anyway, so please keep their, John's family and your thoughts and prayers. So Jack, I saw your hand up.
I'd like to let you know that TJ O'Malley is, is doing better. He, he was in the hospital with a blood infection. He has now moved to rehab. I saw Julie this afternoon. She says he is now doing physical therapy, which is an improvement.
Good. Okay, thank you for that update. I know TJ's had a lot of health issues lately, so definitely want to keep him in our thoughts and prayers, too. Yeah. Anyone else? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands, so if we can just have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move down to the approval of minutes. Counsel, you received the minutes last week from Susan. I did not see any emails with any corrections. I don't have any. So does anyone want to make any now, or we all good? If we're good, somebody could make a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes from the February 14th Town Council Meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll move on from the mayor and Town Council. Number one, the Kensington Parkway Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvements. Nate?
Yeah, so I'll try to be really quick. This was a bit of an extension from what we discussed at the last council meeting regarding the Kensington Parkway improvements for pedestrians and bicyclists in our stretch of the, of that road. And I just wanted to bring the attention to the council that there is a, a potential to, I think, make it more comprehensive, what we're looking at, and I think more collaborative in the sense that we have an opportunity to work with a couple of the neighboring jurisdictions to put together a letter of intent to pursue a grant through the Kim-Lan fear bicycling network program that the state runs. You know, this, to back up one step, this came about because the improvements that are being made with the county and the Washington Sanitation Sewer Commission, just south of us on the, on that part of the stretch of Kensington Parkway, has received some public pushback, to be, to be frank, from some of the residents there. And one of the concerns is that it doesn't really do a good job with situating that piece of it into the broader network or the vision of what it's meant to be. And, and you know, it's, it's not, people are having trouble with understanding where it fits and how, you know, how does this really help things more broadly, given the other concerns of, of the remaining parts of that stretch. So whether it's directly in relation to whether they do that or not, the county decides to move forward with that or not, I, I think is, you know, it could be a separate thing to consider, but I've reached out to North Chevy Chase and Chevy Chase View, both their town managers, as well as to the County Department of Transit, Montgomery County Department of Transportation, just to see if they would be receptive to taking this more, you know, integrated approach, looking for the whole stretch of the Kensington Parkway road going from essentially from our town center to the Purple Line, to realize what is in the bicycling master plan. And using that as an opportunity to really think about how we link our businesses to, you know, that part of Chevy Chase and how we bring, you know, help support people who are interested in commuting, and it's a big goal of the, of the, of the counties as well as states to do those sorts of things. So, long story short is, I think there's an opportunity to, to step back and think a little bit more, you know, more holistically on this and, and really put a proposal, or at least a letter of intent, together with the neighboring jurisdictions. Now, they're, they're going through a similar kind of feeling out process with their council meetings this week as well. I talked to the county today and they're, you know, they're interested in providing their endorsement or support. There's, you know, there, there's, it's a bit complicated for how it gets funded, but basically it's a 20% match, you know, they would basically give, let's say it's $100,000 grant, we'd have to, or the partners would have to put in ultimately 20, 20,000 of it. So because of the fact that we already have this agreed to allocate it in our next fiscal year budget for our portion of it, I think it's a good opportunity to leverage that finance that we're already going to allocate for it to make it a little bit more holistic. It's a long, it may be a long shot, but if we have everybody on board, the neighboring jurisdictions, like I said, and they ultimately agreed to go for it, I think it's, I think it makes sense. So I just wanted to give that update because I know we talked a lot about it last week or last month, and I know that, you know, some of the concerns that have been expressed for other portions of it, I think could be, you know, we can, we can help to address these issues in the more long term.
Does that affect the, the WSSC portion of, which is kind of what started?
Yeah, so that's, that's a great question. That's what I was trying to get at. I'm not sure what the county is going to do with that. I know that they, I heard from Chevy Chase View that they're going to do another field visit to see if they can address the concerns of the residents there. I think it was Delegate Carr who, who had formally requested it from, from the county. So I think they have to talk with, with him about that request and whether it's, you know, whether this gets folded into that specifically. I mean, I, I don't quite know at this point, but it would have to at some point consider that section of it. So if they move forward with it outside of this, I think, you know, it still gets put into, maybe that's a, a temporary fix, and when they, you know, they, they look at this more for the longer term solution from start to finish, from Purple Line over to our town.
Okay. Um, Counsel, do you have any questions for Nate? No?
I, I, I'll just say briefly, I, I think it's a good thing that we are looking at, you know, the broader pathway. I, I remember on one of these early phone calls where we sort of signaled an openness to this idea of a, of, you know, a partial bike path between Saul and Franklin, saying my, my suggestion was that we make sure that the bike path they proposed is consistent with what would be above and below it. So for example, if for the length of the bike path from Saul up into Kensington would call for it to be most usable on the west side of the road, then it ought to be on the west side of the road. And the fact that, that for that little stretch of it, it, it's being built initially on the east side of the road, I, I just felt like it, it's a, it ought to be looked at as a whole and not just as a convenience factor for, you know, WSSC contributing part of the paving. So I think it's good. Nate, when you talked to the county, I, I know that one of the Chevy Chase View residents had sent kind of a detailed email to them about a whole bunch of issues with that southern section. Were you talking with the same people?
Yeah, so I was speaking with Patricia, who is the new project manager, who took over for Kyle, as well as Corey Fitz, Tim Couples, Sandy Brecker, and her colleague, who we've been working with on the TLC grant. Yeah, so I don't know, I don't know what they've, whether she's responded or not, but my sense, she had a quick update. They're going to do a field visit and meet with some of the residents there. And that was, that was, that was really it, because we wanted to talk about the broader, the broader issue. We didn't, we only had limited time.
So, so they're not about to start construction on this thing, obviously. They've got some, a couple of things to consider.
Yeah, there's definitely, they're definitely doing another meeting. That was clear, clear.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions before I open it up to the residents, if they have questions for Nate? No. Does anybody have any questions? Any residents have any questions that they want to ask Councilmember Ingle before we go to the next item? Okay, not seeing any hands. Nate, anything else?
No, I just, yeah, I was just put, maybe I'll move forward with putting together, if we hear back, feedback from the other jurisdictions that they're on board. I mean, it's really only a letter of intent and doesn't commit us to doing anything. The application's due in June sometime. We would find out in September. So that actually aligns very well with what we're going to do anyway on our stretch, timing wise. So I, I think it's pretty simple to, to move forward with it. But thanks for the feedback, Darren. Glad to hear your support.
I'm late to the game here, but I've been noodling over something in my head. Nate, are there best practices around, it's building off a kind of Darren's thought, around building bike infrastructure where we, to try and avoid, you know, changing the style of lane, changing the side of the road, like all these things to try and point at, being smart from the onset?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think, I think there's certainly design manuals that they have and the county uses, but my sense was that a project like this that crosses jurisdictions is quite complex with the, just the way that the, the road narrows and how, you know, how, how, what, what land is available to do it, that it would take, it would take a, a really an integrated study to get it right, on the technical side, not only that, but on the process side. So I think that study would draw from best practice that's out there to try to figure this out. But my sense was that it really won't ever happen unless it's done with a, you know, the grant that integrated, integrates it like this. Or this will give it a much better chance of, of coming up with, you know, the right solution, if you want to call it that. I don't know if I answered your question, Connor?
I mean, enough to know that people whose jobs this is every day need to be involved to help design a, a safe and functioning solution that isn't, you know, adding more confusion or more problems than it's fixing.
For sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I'm good. Right. Not seeing any other hands, comments? So we'll move on down to number two. Um, we've kind of discussed this like a somewhat informally, so we wanted to make sure that we brought it to a town meeting, so it'd be a formal. And, and right now, the, the staff is preparing to send out ballot applications on to all registered voters after May 11th, which would be the last day to file for your candidacy. I want to make sure we would also, of course, have in-person voting, vote by mail, and then vote by the Dropbox. So I just want to make sure whether the council had any additional questions. Of course, if we have an uncontested election, then we would have no election. So winners would just be declared if it is uncontested in either the mayor race or the council race that's upcoming. And that was changed last year. So, Counsel, you have any questions? Any things you want to change, make different?
So it's, it's basically keeping it the same as last year, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, I think that went well.
Okay. Anyone in the audience have any questions regarding the elections? Okay. Um, Joe, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Furman. Yes, curious to know what the likely candidacies look like if the council members who are up for election or reelection this year decided to go ahead to stand for reelection, and also your plans, Mayor Furman.
Um, I've actually already filed. So I filed a few weeks ago. So I do plan to run for reelection, yes.
Okay.
I filed as well, Joe. I will run for reelection, not, not for mayor, for, for council.
Oh, okay. And we have the biggest vote getter of all, Councilmember Hillsaiet.
I'm bowing out. You're gonna, you're gonna have to run for my spot, Joe.
Is that an endorsement or what?
Let's talk.
We're talking.
Hey, you should do it, do it.
Not a chance. Well, I won't say that.
Okay, so I, I think you, every, you've got myself and Councilmember Ingles plan to run. It sounded like Councilmember, Councilmember Hillsaiet, at this, at least today, this evening, she's declining to put her hat into the ring is, and, but we have until May 11th for people to file. So at this point, um, we just have the two right now.
Thanks, Mayor Furman.
You're welcome. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay. All right, staff, you, we will be doing the, the ballots, applications to all registered voters in the town. And then, so same drill as, as last year. It's a quick turnaround because the election follows about four weeks later. So it's, it's pretty quick. Comes up fast. Okay. Any other questions on this topic? And we'll, otherwise we'll move on. Okay. Um, Town Council meetings, uh, March 9th, 2020 was our last in-person meeting. Uh, Councilmember Ingles has never had the, met in person, except in, we've had a work session in person, so he has had to experience that, but never a Town Council meeting. So we are...
I've met you all in person at some point many times.
Of course. Of course, but we would, we would like to go back to in-person meetings in a hybrid type situation. So for those who prefer to stay on Zoom, you will be able to do that. So we hope to have that up and running. Matt, do you think we will be able to do that by the April meeting?
Yeah, we'll be working with Montgomery Municipal Cable on, on getting that. So we'll be able to be in person and live stream on YouTube and be on Zoom, so.
Okay, great. Um, we will, we may have some meetings. Everybody will be on Zoom. We haven't decided yet, but there may be, you know, bad winter days that we decide to just, everybody stays home and we'll just do it by Zoom, but we'll, you know, alert people as that comes up. So hopefully we can actually look at a schedule, but this is a great way of doing it that will allow people want to give presentations, you know, some of the, whether they're elected officials or from different organizations, they don't have to make the trip if it's, prevents them from coming on an evening. So we're looking forward to that. So anyone on the council have any questions regarding this?
When, when do we start?
We're hoping to do it at the April meeting.
Okay, good.
Are you not going to be there?
I'll be away for spring break, but that's fine. I can test the hybrid.
Well, actually, this is a good time to say, do we want to have our Town Council meeting during spring break? It would be the 11th, I think, is public, is this for public or private or both? I don't...
I think it depends on the private, but it's definitely public.
Okay. Um, Counsel, what do you want to? We have, we need a quorum so that if Nate's not going to be here, we need at least...
I'm fine either way. I don't want to change the meeting.
No, I understand, but we've, we've juggled these before because of spring break. So this is not a new thing.
I can certainly go either way. We will not have left yet, so.
Bridget, what about you?
Can you tell me the date again? I'm sorry, I was distracted.
Uh, April 11th, the second Tuesday would be, or second Monday would have, would be our normal meeting night.
Um, let me check one thing.
Darren, you and I don't have children at home anymore, so it doesn't really affect us.
Tracy, is that the week of Easter?
Uh, Easter week is the 17th. Easter's on the 17th.
Okay, then I can, so if it's on the 11th, you said the 11th? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
Okay, well, then I guess we'll keep it on the 11th. And Nate, I promise you, we will also meet in person in May. How's that?
It's a good deal.
Okay.
Perfect.
Good. Okay, anyone in the, in the audience have any questions regarding going back to in-person? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands, so we will move on to number four. And Connor promised us a 45-minute slide.
Yep.
Presentation.
Luckily, we, just one short update. This is on 10619 Connecticut Avenue, crossroads at Kensington. It's where Hawkins is right now, Connecticut and Plyers Mail. It's just an update that you're notified they filed last week, late last week with the county. They were working out a couple of last minute details, both just architecturally with some of their potential leases, as well as with the county. But they are now set for the April 21st public hearing on the Montgomery County Parks and Planning calendar, not the Town of Kensington. The April 21st meeting is Parks and Planning. So that is the public hearing for 10619 Connecticut. That's it.
And you will have opportunities to give testimony if you wish.
Correct. So that, that is a public meeting. Anybody can go to the agenda and sign up to testify for the meeting, as well as get the plans from the county's website. If we don't have the most recent plans, just because we were just made aware of it kind of today, we'll get those on the town, our town website under the redevelopment, but they were just a couple of minor architectural, you know, alignment of glass panels and how they were enclosing the roof systems. So, but we can get those on our website, or you can get them from the county's website. In fact, I'll, I'll find the link real quick and put it in the chat.
Yeah, I'm not sure you could really tell the difference. It really is just a, a matter of the glass and widening doors. It's really not pretty. So, okay, thank you. Any questions for Connor? No? Okay, um, Counsel, do you have anything that's not on the agenda that you just want to bring to people's attention? Connor, I'll start with you.
Uh, just to, the mayor and I had the opportunity to participate in a kind of a idea exchange with the city of Bowie. They are looking at kind of revamping their historic district, and they had done a window tour, kind of pre-pandemic to a number of places in Montgomery County. A town resident, Andrew Rao, chairs their economic development committee. So he pointed them to us, even though we are a much smaller town than them, and asked that we share some of our insights, of things where we have been successful, the long path we've taken, but also just the success of our businesses, our business district, our events. So the mayor and I, it was, it was really fun, because this was a whole meeting just about getting up and singing the praises of all the great things that are happening in Kensington. So that was last Monday. And then Mayor Trace and I also attended Kensington Can, a meeting of business leaders that evening, which was great, because it was their first time back having a public meeting in about two years. There were about 30 businesses there represented. Many are new businesses that have started during the pandemic, and they've got a lot of energy. And it was just, there was just a lot of excitement to kind of be back together, start thinking about events, ways to learn from each other, welcoming all these new businesses in. So it was, it was really, really fun to be a part of that, which leads to, I assume you'll cover Olive and Loom, Tracy?
Yeah, go ahead. You can talk about it.
So Saturday was the grand opening of one of our newest businesses, Olive and Loom. They're in the Johnson Shopping Center, two doors down to the left from where Dish and Dram is. They are a wonderful business of everything from jewelry and, and housewares and candles and just a complimentary to a lot of the other boutiques that we have. And so Tracy and I were there, we had an opportunity to meet with Farazan and her husband Ted, who owned the shop. They moved actually over from Pike and Rose to our, to the Johnson Shopping Center. A number of the other businesses nearby came by as well to support them, even though it was like a hurricane of snow. It was, it was unfortunately a very big change in weather from Friday to Saturday, but it was still, it was a wonderful event, and it's so exciting to have them there. And so they are a wonderful new addition to Johnson's. And then that adds one last talking point, which is, there is one more new business that we can now talk about that is coming to the Johnson's Shopping Center. It is called Baby Cat Brewery. So the Town of Kensington is getting a microbrewery. It will be behind the main shopping center, in the back, taking over the space where Logan Automotive is by the train tracks. They signed their lease this past week on Thursday. They are going to begin, you know, the, the build out of that space for brewery operations. They will brew on site, both beer and seltzer. They will have wine. They are not going to have a kitchen to begin with. Their plan is to partner, they're already talking with Dish and Dram and some of our other local restaurants and food trucks to kind of lift up those businesses' food service. They are hoping for an opening in the September to October timeframe. We got to be realistic. There are supply chain issues out there, but they are, they're really trying to be open by Labor Day because of the festival and the parade. But one way or another, somewhere this, this fall, Kensington will welcome its newest business, Baby Cat Brewery. So that's very exciting. It's a, it's a brewery done by, by local, you know, Kensington area business owners and brewers. So it's a really hyper-local business as well. So they're really excited about being here in the town.
Yeah, and they're, they're also looking to do, to have some murals painted on the, on the side too, as well. Yeah. I'm sorry, Nate, did you have a comment?
I was just saying, finally, finally, the brewery comes. It's great to hear that and all the updates. Sounds like it's a perfect time for an Oktoberfest.
Yes.
Premiere, opening, launch.
We've already discussed that when he said, well, probably October.
In September, right?
Uh, well, October's a long month, too, if he, so if he gets into October a little bit, it'll be fine. We can do it in, you know, anytime in October. So, yeah, no, it's very exciting. And so, yeah, that shopping center is going to have some new changes, and we definitely welcome Olive and Loom, and they will also have some classes, which is kind of exciting. So, you know, and candle making and some other things that they're planning. So they'll put up a, a schedule soon, and so groups can come in and, you know, have gatherings together and, and have a class. So that's exciting. So Darren, do you have anything you want to add?
No, other than I don't know why they don't call themselves Kitten Brewery.
Kitten Brewery?
You know, I'll talk to you, Darren. I'll talk to you.
They, they already have their logo. Come on, you can look it up.
I know, yeah. Well, I always thought of this as more of a dog town, but okay, I, I've had cats, so it's like, okay. I can live with cats. Uh, Bridget, anything you want to add? No. How's the street lighting testimony?
So Alex very nicely covered for me. My husband had surgery. They schedule those 40 hours ahead of time now.
Okay.
Um, so she very nicely testified, and I'll let her talk about it. But it is now in committee, so it has to get voted out of committee and then make it for crossover to the Senate, which it looks like, I think it will, unless something changes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Nate, anything else you want to add?
Um, maybe just another public service announcement about the upcoming April 21st, seven to nine P M. Seven to nine PM, uh, public workshop for the, the Connecticut Avenue Connectivity Corridor Study that we've been doing uh, with the county and with, um, one of the design firms, uh, that was hired through the TLC grant. It sounds like twenty-first is going to be a busy day, but, um, that public workshop, we're going to start flyer-ing and getting the word out to make sure that people, uh, one, one attend and I guess two, provide their input into some of the initial ideas that are being, uh, presented to us in terms of short, medium term and long term solutions for improving connectivity across that corridor. So be on the lookout. You'll see flyers, you'll get email blasts. Hopefully you can't miss it, but, um, but please do mark your calendars for seven and nine PM Town Hall, uh, but we'll also have a, a virtual option to participate in that.
Okay, good. And, um, the, uh, cat decided to cancel their, um, production, so the drill hall will actually be empty. So um, it'll, you know, not, we could do it with the, we could do it with the, uh, uh, production, but you know, now the, the room will be emptied instead, so. Um, uh, the only thing I just want to add, I, I just want to remind the council that, uh, the journal, we are going to do an April journal. So I, if you're planning on, uh, submitting anything, please get it to Carrie Anne no later than, uh, March twenty-second. Um, and also a reminder that on, um, St. Patrick's Day on Thursday at six thirty, uh, our MML chapter meeting is, uh, with the county council. Um, you should have pre-registered for that. I think Friday was the deadline, um, but they will be having, uh, the chapter meeting after the meeting with, um, with the county council. So hopefully if you plan to go, you did register. So you can reach out to Holly if you missed it and see if she'll pass on your name to the county council person. So. Anyway, um, okay, I think that's it. And we will move on. Uh, does anybody from the audience have any questions about our updates? Not seeing any. Oh, um, Alex, do you want to mention, um, about the street light? Anything from the testimony?
Sure. So the testimony is honestly a blur. So I, I read Bridget's testimony that she provided for me. And, uh, basically it was hospital ten eighty-three. It was delegate cars bill and it would enable municipalities to purchase streetlights. Um, and maintain them. So, uh, it's enabling, doesn't require them to, but it gives them the option.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, so let's move down to the town manager and, uh, staff. Matt?
Sure. Uh, mayor and council, within the current fiscal year, uh, we allocated, uh, an eight thousand dollar grant to the Kensington Historical Society specifically for, um, an executive director. And KHS is currently reorganizing, reorganizing, um, and they have requested that the fu- remaining funds, which is about sixty-four hundred dollars, instead of being allocated towards an executive director, go towards, um, a, um, communication staff, uh, which will help update their website and promote KHS, um, a monthly fee for the, uh, website hosting some computer equipment and two thousand dollars towards, um, archiving projects. Um, Kate DeWitt is on the call. She wants to add anything to that. Uh, staff approves the recommendations, uh, from KHS and, uh, we just kind of want approval from the council to approve it.
Counsel, does anybody have any questions for Matt or Kate? Anyone in the audience have a question regarding these funds? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Um, can we get a motion to, um, to go ahead and let the staff reallocate these funds?
I move to allow the staff to reallocate the KHS funds.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, a couple of quick updates. Milling and paving of Fawcett Street, uh, Mitchell Street, Montgomery Avenue and Lexington will take place the end of this month or the first week of April. Uh, it will include the, um, the speed humps on Kensington Parkway North as well that we approved a few months ago. And, uh, the completion of the pedestrian, um, access from the parking lot to the walking path at St. Paul Park. Uh, so we hope to get the contract, um, contractors in here, weather permitting, by the end of the month. And, um, we are.
Eighty-eight one, Matt?
Correct, yes. So they're going to put the, uh, the perky pave over there. We have some issues with some tree roots. Um, we just need some, um, temperatures that are a little higher. Can't dip into the twenties and thirties, so we're waiting on that. And, um, we're working with a consultant and I hope to have a contract for the council at the April meeting, um, that would oversee our bridge repair project. Um, we have to clean up some of the specs that were in the RFP and we need a project manager. So I hope to have that contract, uh, for the council in April.
And is the crosswalks, are they also coming in, the ones?
They'll be a little. Yeah, they'll probably be towards the end of April, um, but, um, the contractor will just chalk them out right after milling and paving and then the, the other contractor will, will come in. We need about sixty degree weather for those.
Okay.
Uh, on St. Paul Park, um, once that last little section with the flexi path is in, um, are we rece- uh, seeding along that? Okay, when the weather, yeah.
Yeah, the, the crews going back and reseeding pretty much everywhere. We want to wait at least over by Town Hall until they're done paving. Uh, because the crews will be right up on the curb when they're milling and paving. Um, they did put some, um, some saw down at the bump out, if you noticed.
Yep.
But we're kind of waiting for the rest of the area till after the milling and pave.
Yeah, that, that one, you know, the little strip kind of between the parking and then the walking path just needs. So, perfect. That's it. Thanks.
Counsel, any other questions for, um, for Matt? Any hands? Anyone in the audience have a question regarding these issues? Joe?
Thanks, Mayor Furman. Um, Matt, did I hear you correctly in saying that for this bridge project, which I presume is the south end of Kensington, the three bridges that you've mentioned in the past, is going to need a project manager? Is that the contract you're talking about for next month?
Correct, yeah. So every project needs some kind of project manager. Um, this project is pretty detailed, so, uh, it's not in the best interest of the town of me overseeing it. Um, so we need a project manager, preferably an engineer that can oversee the day-to-day, uh, aspects of the job.
Okay, I was just wondering, so that's the contract. It's not the contract to do the repairs. This is a preliminary contract then for the project.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I don't see any, any hands. So, um, let's move on to, um, public appearances. This is the opportunity for anything that's not on the agenda to, to bring up. And I see Jack has his hand up. Jack?
Thank you. First, I'd like to, to tell you that today, today is Pi Day, three fourteen.
Oh.
It's also Albert Einstein's birthday, eighteen seventy-nine. A couple of things real fast. I, I really liked the bump out on Fawcett Street at, at the corner with Howard Avenue. But I think it would be even better if, if they would put the, the two, two mirrors on, on the utility pole across the street at forty-five degrees so that you can see what is coming on Howard Avenue without having to pull your nose into the intersection.
Okay, um, did, uh, Jack, our, um, Mr. Cutro, did he come up with, uh, did he make a, um, an analysis on that?
Joe, not yet, not yet. We're, um, it's, it's on his list. Um, Joe's pretty busy with us right now, so.
Okay, so that's still in progress, Jack. We haven't, there's been no decision on it.
Gets you a lot of benefit.
Right, okay. Okay.
Okay. I have two astronomical announcements. This Friday, the eighteenth, there will be a full moon. And on Sunday, the twentieth will be the Verne Equinox. That's the first day of spring. I'm sure we're all looking forward to spring.
Yes, yes, we are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, does anybody else have anything for public appearances? Hmm, Joe?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Furman. Just, just wondering when the town's twenty mile an hour speed limit takes effect? Could you refresh my memory?
Yeah, and the signs will go up too.
July first. And has the town thought of any other, uh, enforcement measures to, uh, to make sure that, that speed limit is respected? Beyond, you know, the smiley face that device on the Howard Avenue?
Uh, does the Mobility Traffic, uh, Mobility and Traffic Committee want to, um, comment on that or?
But we, we have not discussed, um, changing our current primary, uh, enforcement areas. Uh, it's something we can discuss with the Mobility and Traffic Committee, um, on whether they want our officers to run traffic or check speeds, but currently it's not something, um, that we've discussed with the committee.
Okay, uh, the reason I bring this up again is that, you know, there's continual flaunting of the no left turn restrictions at rush hour on Frederick Avenue and Kent Street, Frederick Avenue and Wake Street and Kent Street and Kensington Parkway. Uh, that, that remains a problem. Motorists make those turns without impunity, with impunity and, and it's, uh, a chronic problem. An unenforced problem.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, does anybody else have any, um, anything they want to bring up? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands, so we will, uh, move on to ordinances, resolutions and regulations. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, before you this evening is a public hearing for Charter Resolution Number CR dash zero one dash twenty twenty-two. A charter resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington, amending Article Four, Council, Section four oh three. Qualifications of council members, Article Five, the mayor, Section five oh three. Qualifications of the mayor and Article Seven. Registration, nominations and elections, Section seven zero one. Qualifications of voters of the town charter to enable a non-citizen who is a lawful permanent resident or is authorized to work United States to be eligible to register to vote in town, in the town of Kensington municipal elections. Um, we have sent out a letter to all residents within the town notifying them of the charter resolution and the public hearing this evening. Uh, we sent it out not only through a letter, but we sent out a postcard. Uh, we received nine comments as of, uh, six thirty this evening, which the council already has in their file. Um, and we have a, a slight issue with timing. So if we want this charter resolution to be effective for the um, election in June, we will need to pass it this evening.
Okay, so that just means we, we typically extend, um, the time period for people to comment and we would just instead close the, uh, close the hearing and, um, determine if we wanted to take a vote, correct?
Correct.
So, um, we will take, uh, we're, usually we have people sign up for testimony, but, uh, we will, and obviously can't do that. So just for the record, if you could just give your name and your street, that would just be really helpful for the recording. So, um, I see Jack has his hand up. So, Jack, go ahead. Jack, you're on mute.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. I'm Jack Gaffey. I live on Frederick Avenue. The right to vote is a very important right in democracy. Recently, several states have passed laws restricting the right to vote. Unfortunately, the town of Kensington is proposing a charter amendment that goes too far in the opposite direction by proposing to allow non-citizens to vote in town election. The right to vote has traditionally been the right of citizenship. That's one of the reasons why people become citizens. It is confusing to have different requirements for voting in town elections than in county, state and federal elections. Recently, a number of people have found themselves in serious legal trouble by accidentally voting or attempting to vote in an election they weren't entitled to vote in because they didn't understand the requirements to vote. A majority of the registered voters who participated in the town survey, uh, on this, on this issue agreed with, agreed with me that the chart, that the town charter should not be changed. The number of voters who will be affected by this change is not significant. At the town council meeting in January, it was stated that the proposed charter change would affect only ten people. In town elections, typically twenty or thirty percent of the registered voters actually vote. Thus, the proposed charter change might result only in additional two or three voters. And we don't even know that, uh, that the non-citizens would vote if they were allowed to. Thus, in conclusion, for the reasons stated above, I urge the council to vote against the proposed charter change. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Um, Kathleen, I don't know your last name, but you're up next.
Oh, hi, it's Kathleen Danforth. Um, I sent you guys an email.
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, that's okay. I didn't have my last name. So I, uh, my husband and I I live out on zero five Dietrich Avenue. And we would be one of those non-citizens. So we live in the town of Kensington. We've lived here since two thousand fourteen and we are um, we certainly make the mistake and try to vote in the federal election. We understand this is a very small, um, you know, privilege, like a small voting privilege just in the town election. Uh, yeah, I, I think as residents here, we own, you know, we have our house here. Our kids go to the public school. We shop locally. We would love to have a voice on local issues. And that's why we propose and agree with the change to the charter. Great, thanks.
Thank you, Kathleen. Okay, does anybody else want to comment?
Was it just me or, uh, because?
She did, uh, she did go out a little bit, yes.
Okay, I was just hoping to hear what she said after that you've lived here since two thousand fourteen.
Yeah.
That seemed like to be the core part of the test.
Uh, Kathleen, are you able to come back and just?
Yeah, I can come back. Yeah. Uh, yeah, so we've been here since two thousand fourteen. Uh, our kids go to the, like, my daughter attends Walter Johnson High School. We would love to have a voice on local issues. Um, you know, we, we shop here, we live here, we're, we've been residents here for eight years and plan on continuing to live here. And so we would love to have the chance to vote locally.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Kathleen, you understand the difference between the federal, local voting and would?
I think we did hear that part. I did, I did.
Yeah, I, I, we would, we would not make the mistake and try to vote in the federal election. We understand we do not have that vote. This is a very, you know, one whole other election. And certainly I'm sure people are checking names on lists when people are coming in to vote, so I don't, I don't see there being any confusion. Had a girl.
Thank you. Um, anyone else have their hand up? Andrew?
Yeah, hi, I'm also a non-citizen but resident of Kensington. Um, I philosophically kind of agree with Jack. I, uh, I think if you choose to live in the United States and you want to vote, you should take out citizenship. Um, but one question I did have when I was reading the ordinance, if, if it goes forward and, uh, non-citizens, do you guys check, uh, for citizenship requirements like green cards or how do you do that? And the second question is if there, uh, non-citizens can vote, can non-citizens also run for office? I don't, I didn't see that in the, in the document where a non-citizen could actually run for an office and if you're allowing non-citizens to vote.
Matt, did you want to address that? Because we did speak about that earlier.
Sure. So this, uh, charter resolution and the corresponding ordinance, uh, do not specifically address whether, where they won't, uh, you would not be allowed to run for public office. Uh, it's something that the council could consider at a later time, but it's not included in this charter resolution or ordinance. Um, I'm sorry, what was, what was your first question, Andrew?
Uh, documentation.
Oh, um, the Board of Supervisors of Elections, uh, well, in this case, it would, you would go on a supplemental list. Um, so our clerk treasurer would just check that you live in the town and that you have some kind of documentation that would meet the requirement, whether it's the green card or that you're a legal worker. We would need to. That would meet the requirement, whether it's the green card or that you're a legal worker. We would need to have some documentation that clarifies that.
Can I can I ask? So if you went through the the mechanics of this to enable people to vote, was there? Did you discuss whether or not the noncitizens should be able to run? Like, did you debate that? Or I I'd see if one one goes, shouldn't the other follow?
We did not bring that. We did not talk about that at all. In the question, it was merely the voting and that's what we have received. Every election when people are asked, you know, oh, you know, given literature or, you know, a campaign, can you vote for me? And, you know, the reply is, I I can't vote for you. I'm not a citizen, but I would love to be able to vote. So I think that is the direction that the council took and no one said I'd love to vote and run for a certain. It was always I would just like to be able to vote. So I think that's why we did not address that portion of it.
Are you guys opposed to addressing it like a friendly amendment tonight or something someone?
We can't do it tonight because it has to be. It has to be publicized and so we're not able to do that tonight. As Matt said, it would have to be separate.
Okay. And one last thing has nothing to do with this Connor Tracy, you did an amazing job with the City of Bowie Economic Development Authority. It was really, really well done and.
Well, Connor did ninety nine point nine percent of it, but.
Very proud of you guys. Do a great job. I just wanted to get that.
Thank you. I would just smart enough to recommend Connor to give the program.
I hear we're working on maybe a town visit, Andrew.
That's right. You shouldn't have. You shouldn't have got them all jacked up now they want to come.
Okay, all right, let's stay on topic here.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, thank you for your comments. All right, is anyone else in the audience wishing to testify? Kathleen, I see your hand up. Just want to make sure you don't have anything else to add, so.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, Joe, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Furman. Joe Campbell, Frederick Place. You know, I think Mr. Rowell makes some very interesting points, and I'm sorry that the council didn't discuss this possibility of. Of allowing people who aren't US citizens to run for office in the town of Kensington. I think that would be an interesting. Component to to have considered and I'm regrettable that that was not brought up. I I think it is useful to keep in mind that this question, which has taken a lot of time with the council. Over the past few months. Moved ahead, even though it did not receive a majority support in the poll that the town commissioned. Last year, and that's really distressing that that the council would disregard. Clear sentiment. I mean, it was close, but it was still. A majority that said it opposed this measure and or a similar measure and it's it's dismaying that the town. Council nonetheless went ahead with this. Also, I would encourage the the council to keep the public record open as it traditionally does. For another few weeks after this meeting to encourage people to to submit their comments. To extend essentially the the public comment period as it usually does. And also with that in mind, I was wondering where I could access the comments that the town manager mentioned had been submitted in this. By six thirty PM tonight. Are they available somewhere?
Matt, are they online?
They're not. I can provide them to you directly. If you'd like them.
Yeah, I would like to see them and I think that they should be part of the public record that you've gathered on this because. Be interesting to know what some other thinking is about this matter. And so I encourage the council to keep the record open as it traditionally does.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you, Mayor Furman.
You're welcome. Okay, um, is there anyone else that wants to testify on this charter amendment? Charter resolution, excuse me. I am seeing no hands. And. Anywhere and I'm not seeing any other comments, so. Counsel. Do you all want to make any comments? Or make a motion?
Should we have the second public hearing first, since we have two charter and code?
How's that work, Matt? I don't know.
You could just delay the the motion. So you could close the public hearing of the charter resolution. Just just continue it for later in the meeting. If you'd like.
Okay, did you want to make a motion Darren then to to close the hearing and then reopen it?
Well, I don't know that we need to reopen it in order to vote on it. I think we just need to close the public hearing. And then later in the meeting, make a motion to. Support the two different charter or two two different. Charter resolution and ordinance. Does that sound reasonable, Matt? And the point of closing the public hearing is we're saying, well, we're not going to listen to any more comments and. So I I'm I I would make a motion to to close the public hearing for Charter Resolution CR dash oh one dash twenty twenty two.
Is there a second? That was you, Bridget. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. So the hearing is closed for Charter Resolution CR oh one dash two zero two two. All right, so we're going to move on to number two. Matt?
Mayor and Council, before you this evening is a public hearing on ordinance number oh dash zero one dash twenty twenty two. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington amending Chapter two. Government and administration, Article two, elections, Section two dash two zero one. General voter registration to enable a noncitizen who is a lawful permanent resident or is authorized to work in the United States. To be eligible to register to vote in the town of Kensington municipal elections.
And do you want to just touch on why we're doing this as a resolution and as an ordinance, just for clarity for people?
Correct. The council specifically, Councilmember Bartram brought to the attention of the staff. There was some language within our existing ordinance that needed corrected in speaking with Town Attorney Ferguson. She clarified that the term citizen. Needed to be clarified and corrected to say a lawful permanent resident. As opposed to directly citizen within the ordinance.
All right, thank you. All right, so this hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to testify regarding ordinance number zero dash zero one dash two zero two two? Okay, Joe?
Mayor Furman, how does how does this differ from what the council just closed the public hearing on?
As Matt said, it was just cleaning up some language in the. In the ordinance, in the code. So that it would match. That's all it does.
One of the. The Charter Resolution amends the charter, the ordinance amends the code. We just are dealing with them separately, but you know, to the extent anybody offered public comment or emails about. The first that, you know, I'm going to listen to it and with respect to the second as well.
Does that answer your question, Joe?
So the testimony that was given earlier does not have to be repeated. Necessary.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, um. Matt, I see somebody in the waiting room. Okay. All right, I'm not seeing any any hands. So if we want to make a motion to close the hearing.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing on ordinance number oh dash zero one dash twenty twenty two.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll go with Darren. I think he was first. All those in favor? Nate, was that an I?
Yeah, sorry, I said it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, all right. Do you want to keep going down the ordinance or do we want to go back? What's the preference?
Matt, if there's not a problem with it, I would prefer that we take, you know, discuss and then take action on the first two items.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. So counsel, you have before you, number one, the charter resolution. What do you want to do with it?
Well, I can start if that's nobody else is jumping at the bit. I mean, I I take the the comments in opposition to it seriously. They they don't sway me for my support of the idea, but I I would like to sort of acknowledge them and. And say that we're doing something that is it's not unprecedented. There are many municipalities in the area that that have led before us. I acknowledge that the right to vote, particularly in state and federal elections. Is tied to citizenship and I'm not looking to change that. I think that when you in a federal election are voting on something that might affect the Constitution. Whether it be free speech, corporate speech, Second Amendment, right to bear arms, any of those things. I think you ought to, your your skin in the game is that you're a citizen. We're not, when we elect people in Kensington, we're not doing anything that will affect the federal constitution. And we don't have town citizenship. We have town residency and we are insisting that all people who vote in our elections be town residents. I. You know, we also people who are noncitizens are allowed to vote as part of their homeowners association. They're allowed to vote in PTA. Meetings. And so. Again, I'm not looking to change citizenship as a as a gateway to voting in federally state elections. But in this case, I it doesn't concern me. As far as the confusion element. I I might view this differently if our elections were aligned with November elections. They're not. They're in June. And so there's, and we are maintaining a separate voter registry. So if the person is registered with us, they will be allowed to vote in June. If they're not. They won't. If they come up in November and want to vote in a county or state or federal election, they will not be allowed to because they won't be on. The county and state list. As far as the majority opposed, it was fifty one forty nine and what we received were. Kind of ad hoc comments from people saying that they would feel differently if it was not a blanket expansion to all noncitizens, but limited to. Sort of a core set of people who who seem to have a long term commitment here, who have gone through. The green card process, which is a very arduous process or have obtained the right to work. And so. Yeah, it was a nonbinding survey, but I feel like we got significant comment from people and and I feel comfortable. Even though technically fifty one percent of the survey respondents were opposed. As to keeping the record open. Normally, I mean, that's I feel like that's sort of good governance, you know, that we let people who have heard a discussion for the first time tonight. Have time to submit an email or phone call or letter. In this case, because we did so much front running of this issue, taking the survey. Taking emails before we even initiated the the formal process of a charter and code resolution. I'm not. Concerned with proceeding tonight as opposed to leaving the record open and then voting on it. So that that's where I stand.
Counsel, either, Darren, I mean Connor?
I'd echo a lot of, I mean, I share a lot of the sentiments that Darren does. In fact, a comment that he made that. Hasn't come up in our discussion before, but resonated with me enough is that we don't have citizenship for the town. We have residents and. These residents participate on our committees. These residents shop in our stores. These residents are out cleaning up our parks. These residents are are supporting our events. And and so to me, that is something that's very important is they also, I'd like to see them have. A voice in the people who are helping to to lead the town. And and only because I'm typically one to champion the process of public government, you know, to Darren's comments about. Closing the record tonight, I'd echo the same thing that we have been talking about this for just about a year. In preparation to get it to this point where we can have it finished. Prior to this June's election. And so we're sitting at that precipice of we have to act tonight to be able to do that and. And we've been talking about it for nearly a year. The other thing that has happened in the course of that year is that, you know, several people have moved in and out of the town and I will say I. You know, and the chance I've had to talk to several new residents and talk to them about some of the things that are coming up. I've heard supportive comments. So I agree. I understand that, you know, our nonbinding question from months ago was fifty one forty nine. But if we could straw poll it tonight, it could, you know, very well could be different. What I saw was. You know, a town, you know, willing to move forward on this topic, at least engage it was it was, you know, fairly split to me. I'm hearing additional voices that are in support of it and I'd like to move forward this evening so that we can. Implement these changes if voted on, if if passed for this election cycle.
Okay, Nate, did you want to make any comments?
Just two points. I mean, I fully echo what was, I think Darren and Connor did a great job articulating that, but I think. It's important to address the point, I think, that Jack made about. You know, one of the arguments against this is that it only affects a limited number of people and. I mean, I had conversations with some of those people and it matters a lot to them. So I think that. Getting this ability to vote in our elections. Should not be brushed aside as insignificant just because it affects a few people because it's a big impact on them. And it's something that they've been asking for for years, if not decades. So. And I would like to be seen to the point about all of the voter restriction laws being passed in other places. I'd like to be seen as a as a town that embraces. When appropriate, increasing access to voting to our residents, again, not citizens, but our residents. So for those reasons, I'm also supporting it.
Okay, Bridget?
Yeah, I mean, I think if anything, the straw poll showed me that there was confusion about the question and that when. Took into consideration people's comments, it seemed pretty clear to me that there was some strong favor for this. I think there's also in some of the opposition's comments and assumption that people are choosing not to be citizens. And no recognition of the fact that it takes years to become a citizen in many cases. You know, and I think the thing that is most obvious to me is that these are people who are participating in our community. They're part of our community. We see them every day. I know Kathleen and her family volunteer at the polls. You know, it seems needlessly exclusionary to tell them no in this situation.
Okay, thank you very much. I feel the same way right now as the council. I think people are. Think it's it's simple to become a citizen. It's not. There's multiple different visas that people come in on that. Don't even allow them to. To do certain things as far as applying for citizenship for as long as they're working in a certain job. So there are, you know, but they they live here. The decisions that we make are things that are, you know. About our streets and events and all things that people want to be able to participate and and have a say in. And so. I do support the the charter resolution. So if the council doesn't have any comments, we'll entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt. Charter Resolution CR dash zero one dash twenty twenty two.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Bridget, thank you. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, so we will move on to number two. They for the ordinance. So Darren, did you want to start? I mean, it's pretty much.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number oh dash zero one dash twenty twenty two.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. That too is unanimous. Okay. Let's go ahead, and Matt, you said it was like 50 days, is that correct, that it will take effect?
Correct. State law requires 50 days prior to the charter resolution taking effect. By law, it may be taken to a referendum within 30 days. So we would own 40 days if a referendum petition for referendum has been requested.
Okay. And otherwise, then we'll have to provide some means in which permanent residents can actually apply to register with the town. Correct? Okay. Good, thank you. All right, so number three.
Mayor and council, before you this evening, is the introduction of the ordinance number O-02-2022, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington to appropriate and adopt the fiscal year 2022, 2023 FY23 budget and to levy a tax on certain real and personal property under the provisions of Article 6-203 of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended. Staff is requesting that the council set the public hearing for Monday, April 11th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. I will note, we are not requesting any tax increases, taxes will remain the same. And the other note I will make is, we will be releasing detailed information over the next coming weeks, along with the budget plan, which will be available for the public to review prior to the public hearing.
Okay. All right. As Matt said, this is just an introduction, so we will not be taking any questions on this this evening. And we will, the hearing will be at our next meeting on April 11th. Okay, move on to number four.
Can we get a motion for that?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Can we get a motion to set the hearing for the 11th?
I'll move to set the public hearing for ordinance O-02-2022 for Monday, April 11th, 7:00 PM.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you, Nate. All those in favor?
I'm sorry, can I just, do we need a motion, do we need the motion to also include the introduction of that ordinance?
I think it was just to set the hearing, isn't it?
To introduce and to set the public hearing.
Okay, so let's change the motion.
Yep, no problem. Good catch, Sherlock Holmes.
No wonder Bridgette is leading us.
I move for the introduction of ordinance number O-02-2022 and to set the public hearing for said ordinance on Monday, April 11th, 2022, at 7:00 PM.
Okay, Nate, do you want to second that one?
I can do that one.
Okay, great. Now, all those in favor? Bridgette was not a yes? Good. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move down to number four.
Mayor and council, resolution number R-04-2022 is a resolution of the Kensington Town Council confirming appointments made by the mayor to the Board of Supervisors of Elections. Jack Gaffey's term expires at the end of this month. He has been asked and has agreed to serve another year on our Ethics Commission, and the resolution is to continue that for one more year.
Okay.
I'm sorry, along with Martha, Martha, Spencer Harrell, and, oh.
No, no, this is ethics, it should be Dave Budett and Tina Scher.
Number four.
Four. I have too many. I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is, we're on.
This is, this is Board of Supervisors of Elections, which is Martha Deal, Spencer Harrell, and Jennifer Smith, I'm sorry, resolution number R-04-2022.
Okay. All right, does anybody have any questions in the audience regarding this resolution? Not seeing anyone. So council, do you want to take a motion to accept the Supervisors of Elections to reaffirm?
I move that we adopt resolution number R-04-2022 to reaffirm Martha Deal, Spencer Harrell, and Jennifer Smith as Board of Supervisors of Elections for one additional year.
Okay, is there a second? Darren, thank you. All those in favor?
Bye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, now, the Ethics Committee.
Sorry about that.
You need a little line between each one, they're kind of come together.
Too many resolutions. All right, resolution number R-05-2022 is a resolution of the Kensington Town Council confirming appointments made by the mayor to the Town Ethics Commission. This is for the reappointment of Jack Gaffey for a two-year term to serve on the Ethics Commission.
Okay. All right. Is there any questions? Jack, did you want to give a speech or anything like that, or?
Simply thank you.
Okay. All right, is there any questions with the resolution before we ask for a vote? I'm not seeing any hands. Council, does someone want to make a motion?
I'll move to adopt resolution number R-05-2022.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Nate. All those in favor?
Bye.
Thank you. All right, number six.
Mayor and council, resolution number R-06-2022 is a resolution of the mayor and Town Council of Kensington authorizing the town manager to establish no parking anytime on the south side of Carroll Place from the projected west curb line of Hadley Place to 1.50 feet westward, on the west side of Hadley Place from the projected south curb line of Carroll Place to 40 feet southward, and install a corner clearance prohibition on the west side of Hadley Place from the projected south curb line of Carroll Place to 40 feet southward. We received a request from a number of residents to review this intersection over the last few years. Our traffic committee, previously, the traffic committee reviewed the requests in April of 2021. At that time, our traffic engineer, Joe Cuto, provided five options. This resolution encompasses recommendations one through four. The fifth option was for an always stop. He, Joe Cuto, and the traffic committee at the time did not recommend the always stop. We have provided information to, I believe Sheila Din is on the call, and Frederick Beavers as well, if they would like to comment once the council asks any questions. But this is to clean up some sightline issues at the intersection of Carroll, Montgomery, and Hadley Place.
Council, do you have any questions before we open it up to the audience?
I will just make a comment to sort of give you my perspective on this. As somebody who occasionally comes north on Hadley and wants to turn left or right to Carroll or Montgomery, it's hard to see traffic that is coming that does not have to stop. So I think we need to help that situation out.
Okay. I think actually, as a pedestrian too, it's very difficult to see people coming as well because the sidewalk ends there at Hadley, and if you're continuing on, you have to go out into the street. So it's hard to see cars coming. But anyone else?
Matt, just a quick clarification. Sorry you said this, but in Joe's analysis, he did say that the always stop could be considered a later date, right? For two years later or something like that, after we take some data, test this out.
Correct. So it was, he didn't believe that an always stop was warranted based on the number of vehicles and the position of the intersection. The traffic committee at the time agreed with Joe's recommendations, and that's why we're moving forward or presenting options one through four and not the always stop. The always stop can be considered by the council this evening as well, though. There's nothing from stopping.
No. I just wanted to note that I remember reading in his report that he wasn't actually, he wasn't recommending it, but he wasn't fully opposed of looking at it after we see if this solution works, right? He said, if I remember correctly, that it, you know, worse signs have been approved, in his opinion, in the town. So this one could warrant it just on other concerns, not related to traffic down the road, you know, as a potential second step, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, as Matt said, I know there's some residents on the Zoom. If you're interested in doing any testimony, just go ahead and chime in.
Hi, this is Sheila Din at one of the corners in question, and I want to say that I was aware that this is being looked at by the traffic consultant and had talked with him when he was in the area. And obviously, you know, there has been an increase in pedestrians and bikers and things, so we want to have this corner be as safe as possible, and sightlines are an issue with the terrain, but also with the vegetation. So that apparently is part of the recommendations for the vegetation on the west side of Hadley to be trimmed and cut to code specifications. And it's my sense that some of the 40 and 50 feet no parking could be looked at after that, you know, after the trees are trimmed and the sightlines are opened up as, you know, going back to the more standard 25-foot setback, which, you know, we haven't had, there's no established place that says no parking or no sense of like, okay, this is where we gotta be careful not to park. So, you know, it is common that there's cars where there shouldn't be, you know, closer to the corner, but we're all more aware of it now and don't have as many people living around as we did COVID. So, you know, we understand that there are times when it's difficult, but that I feel like the, you know, the proposal could be looked at after some of the sightlines are improved.
Okay. Matt, what was the sightlines was an issue on Fawcett and Howard? What was the footage that we provided there to make the sightlines better that we just recently did on the bump out?
You mean the distance, the radi?
Yeah.
I don't remember off the top of my head. We had multiple issues there. There was some furnishings which we removed initially, and the second was we removed the first parking space. So I think it was, it was probably close to 20 feet on the radi for that. But there, the difference there was there wasn't a full obstruction as there is with the vegetation on this corner. I mean, you could see a little bit from Howard, but, you know, you couldn't see through. There wasn't, you know, it's not, I wouldn't compare this, it's not the same scenario, I guess.
No, I understand. Howard's a bigger, wider road as well, so.
Oh, we did, we did get a question in the chat, if I can just respond really quick with regards to why the always stop was not initially recommended. I'm reading directly from Joe Cuto's email to me. "To justify always stop control, the MUTCD, which is the guidelines for traffic control, requires a minimum of 300 vehicles per hour on combined through-street approaches for eight hours a day. Recent counts on similar streets were estimating, at the time that this was done, 50 cars a day at the highest volume for the combined. For the side streets, the proportion of total traffic entering the intersection should be 40% or greater with an approach volume of about 35 vehicles in the daily peak hour. Hadley Place meets that criterion. So although the intersection falls well short of meeting the standard requirements for total volume, it does pass the test for approach traffic balance." So that's why council member Engel, why he wasn't completely opposed to it down the road, he just did not believe it was justified in the short term.
Can you also address the other question? I'm sorry, Sheila, go ahead.
I just, also, when we got the notice last week, and I'd been aware that this had been, you know, under, you know, a query from pretty much a year and a half process, and we got the notice about the resolution and that it would be discussed tonight, I made sure that the next house over from the Beavers knew and, you know, discussed it with some other neighbors because street parking is a little bit of an issue since, you know, only one side of all of our streets have street parking, and we all have additional cars based on the size, you know, the size of the houses and families from when this neighborhood was first designed. And so we're, you know, kind of looking at that balance too, to make sure that it's not a, you know, it's not detrimental to the homeowners as residents to, you know, to not have street parking down the road. So that was just something that, you know, we all were aware of.
Okay, thank you. Can you address the other question, Matt? The why 50-foot and 40-foot choices were chosen?
Chosen? I can't specifically, Joe didn't mention that in his email to me. I will tell you, what Joe said was, we were trying to create what's called a sight triangle. If this was, if we were starting all over, obviously, the vegetation would not be allowed to be planted in the right of way, and we wouldn't have the sightline issue. And we would just go with the standard 25 feet from the intersection. What Joe was trying to do was find some kind of middle ground here without completely removing all the vegetation on the Beavers' property where we could extend the parking restrictions out so we could kind of create some kind of visual, or what he referred to as a sightline triangle for pedestrians and safety. I don't know, Mr. Beavers is on the call. I don't know if he wants to provide any comment. We have not heard from him on the staff side, so.
Dr. Beavers, did you want to make a comment tonight?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I appreciate the concern about the trees, and obviously, that's on our property, and we've trimmed that before, and we're planning to trim it again. So thank you for your patience. I'll have to tell you that the issue is a little more nuanced than just sightlines. It's also the speed of traffic. And so a gentleman earlier during the council, council call or meeting, made a comment that people don't adhere to the 20, 25 mile an hour speed limit in the town. And I can assure you that rolling down the grade, that they're going more than 25, maybe 30, 45. And so even if we were to clear the trees, even if we were to clear the parking, speed is still going to be an issue. And so thinking about this and discussing it with my wife, Dr. Cynthia Long, I don't see where anyone's mentioned speed bumps, which are in different parts of the town, and I think are effective. And so, comment number one, just to summarize, we're more than willing to shave the trees back and plan to do so, but parking restrictions aside, I would like the council to consider for speed bumps.
Matt, do you want to just address how we do speed humps to Dr. Beavers?
Sure. So there's a standard petition process that staff will actually provide you for anyone in the community that is requesting the speed humps. And then what we would do is we would proceed with a traffic analysis. What that does is it would actually give us a volume count of the number of vehicles and the speeds, and it essentially would give our mobility and traffic committee data that they could make a recommendation to the full council on whether we should proceed with the installation of speed humps.
And Dr. Beavers, are you thinking Hadley Place and Carroll or just Carroll?
Well, Carroll's the main offender, but I tell you, people roll from Carroll all the way down to Hadley, 40 miles an hour.
Okay.
And that's just a guess.
I think just collecting the data, Matt, would be helpful. I think that before, you know, we get into, you know, getting a petition.
Sure, so we are, we're doing the traffic data analysis anyways for the speed reduction in the town. We need six streets. I'd be happy to add Carroll Place west of Hadley as one of the locations, and it would give us a clear, clear indication what the speeds and volumes are.
Are you able to do Hadley as well? It's a short street, but.
Let me talk with you. I think you could probably do both.
Okay. I don't think there's any speed humps on Hadley. I don't think there are.
No, I don't see any on Google Maps.
Yeah, I didn't think so. Dr. Beavers, anything else you'd like to add?
Yes, I, there are speed bumps on Washington Street, and they make a difference.
Okay. Yeah, there's several on Washington Street, that's for sure. And Sheila, do you have anything you want to add as well? And, um, Sheila, do you have anything you want to add as well?
Sorry, I just had to find the right button. Um, no, I, I appreciate the, the careful considering that due to the fact that the, um, you know, we hadn't really had any time to have input to this or, you know, that there might be a different outcome once the vegetation's created the sightline that, you know, maybe this gets reconsidered after the data is gathered and after the trees are trimmed. Cause once the signs go up, you know, they're signs, they're there, the, you know, distances are set.
Right.
And as I said, on our side, the 25 feet is the standard and we understand that. So it's, you know, will be, will be better.
Um, Daisy, you have your hand up. Do you want to?
Sure. Having walked up, but I, I live next to the, um, Beavers on the opposite, opposite side of the Dins. So on Carroll, 10202. And I've obviously spent a lot of time walking up and down that, this little path, taking my kids to the bus stop for years and years. And I have to say for me, oddly, that when there are cars parked closer to the corner and when the Beavers have their cars parked up closer to the corner, it slows down the traffic. It's not the ideal way to slow down traffic, but I know that when I'm walking up Hadley with my dog or my kids, if there's cars there, I'm not as worried about someone flying around the corner coming, you know, from Connecticut Avenue way to the right down Hadley. Because that's where the, the speed usually is. They come, you know, flying down Carroll and make that turn and they don't slow down. But if there's cars and they can't see that well, they do slow down more. So it's an odd thing that I'm concerned about that moving the cars away is going to create more problems and not solve the problem.
That's so funny, Daisy. Scott had the same thought and he goes, this probably isn't going to be politically correct. But you're, you know, it's like, it's like how they restrict wit to slow down traffic. And here you're, you know, you're almost making it like a, you know, a, a raceway by opening it up. So that is, it's a funny consideration, but.
Yeah. Hello, all. This is Cynthia Long Beavers. I just want to first acknowledge, um, the concern with the sightlines. And I, as a homeowner, I certainly appreciate your, uh, consideration of alternatives rather than, um, you know, removal of our vegetation, if you will. It does provide nice, um, privacy for our side yard. And, um, who would have known when we moved in that they would grow to such heights? At any rate, we will do a much better job at, um, at, uh, keeping them in their appropriate shape and, and size. But I would like to add to, uh, the comment, uh, that, uh, Dr. Beavers made earlier. And that being, um, the concern about speed. And I understand that you will do, uh, some, you know, analyses of speed and traffic in the, in the area. I'm just curious, um, is that inappropriate, uh, location to even consider a speed camera? Or would sort of the first step be a hump?
Does it get enough traffic there for a speed camera? I mean, we don't have, we, we could, we have this, uh, the speed camera, or it's not, I guess, a camera, but, um, that's on Howard Avenue, but it doesn't give out tickets, but it takes the data. And that's the same thing that we're, we're proposing is to have our, um, traffic engineer place. I think he uses, does he use the, um, things that sit in the street and it counts?
Correct. So we'll, we'll do an initial analysis. The location doesn't meet the requirements by the state for a speed camera in that location. So that's at this time, the law can always change. Um, it's not an option. Uh, but the, the data that we receive and will be public and we'll be able to provide it to everyone in, in the area and the community. They'll be able to see the number of vehicles, the types of vehicles and the speeds of the vehicles. And, and it breaks it down by hour as well. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I make a couple of observations? Taking privilege as a veteran in traffic committee chair who's successfully escaped. The, I'm not sure that the speed humps are going to be the, the solution to the concerns I'm hearing tonight. Because between Hadley and, I don't, is, is the next block up Baltimore that, I mean, because we normally do them block by block. And there are standards for how far the speed hump should be from the, um, from an intersection. And so what we could find that we, if they request one speed hump, that it's in the middle of Hadley and Baltimore, with plenty of time for traffic to speed up as it's rounding the curb, uh, a curve down onto Hadley.
Yeah, I think you're talking about Washington Street, just so you know.
No, um.
Well, then Carroll Place, Hadley does not attach. It doesn't attach to Baltimore.
You fucking Carol Baltimore.
If we put speed humps on Carroll Place, we would evaluate the petition for the block between Baltimore and Hadley.
Okay.
And I'm saying that's a pretty long stretch. And so the default location might be in the middle. And we could consider two speed humps because it's not unprecedented to have two speed humps on a, on a single block. But even then, I, we could find that the traffic that is rounding that corner that's causing concern from, from a bunch of the residents in that area still has time to speed up. And, and I guess it, I would kind of send this back to traffic mobility and traffic committee for consideration of pushing, as Nate alluded to, uh, for an always stop. We put them where they, you know, are not technically warranted before. The concerns that I keep hearing are that traffic coming around the corner is moving pretty fast. And they don't have to stop because there's no control on that approach or on the other approach. And so if we're trying to address the concerns that we have, um, an always stop would both prevent or deter the racing around the corner behavior. And I think an always stop would also, um, reduce the required amount of sight distance or sight triangle or whatever, whatever our engineer is calling it. So I, I guess trying to address the actual problem in the field, I, I would think that we would want to pursue that as an alternative to what we're, we're thinking about tonight.
Are all the, uh, the residents affected on the call that have spoken up supportive of, of the always stop? Is it, it's just a technical holdup at this point with what Joe has recommended?
Are you asking if any of the residents would oppose an always stop? Or, or do they all support? I, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, because I've heard, I've heard, I've heard, um, various issues touched on that kind of difference, the problem resolution set. So just be curious if that's something the residents fully support. I mean, it's alluded to in some of the comments in the chat. It'd be good to know.
I mean, I think that, that the, you know, I don't drive up there a lot, um, but, uh, and, and, you know, not to put down Sheila, but she's acknowledged, you know, there's, it's going to work on being better. Um, you know, the, there is no parking. There's not supposed to be parking within 25 feet of an intersection. And no parking within 30 feet of a stop sign. So down Hadley Place, there should be 30 feet of no parking. And to both sides of Hadley on Carroll and Montgomery, there should be no parking. And if we put up stop signs, made an always stop, it, it would, it would only raise it from what it is already 25 feet to 30 feet. But I, I think the issue more is the driver behavior of it doesn't, they don't have to stop and they don't. And they're, you know, so I think if we're trying to address the problem, I would, I would focus on whether we can justify an always stop there.
Do you think it should go back then to the mobility traffic committee? Cause it has been a while since they reviewed it.
That would be my suggestion. I, if other people feel like we can move forward with that suggestion tonight, that, you know, I, I'm, I'm agnostic. Another month isn't going to affect us. And, and like, um, the Beavers have said, they're, they're going to, um, do some trimming too.
Yeah. I mean, the, the trimming definitely needs to happen. And, and, and I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Long and Dr. Beavers, but I, I did walk that way the other day and, and I basically had to walk in the grass because your trees were in the sidewalk. So, so that would be very helpful as a pedestrian. But, um, I think that's definitely something that we want to have done. And I think having the data would also be helpful when it does go back to the mobility and traffic committee. I think that would be helpful for them as well. Um, so Daisy, you have your hand up again.
I, this is sort of a side question, but what is the, I know that I'm a, not as active of a resident as I should be. But what is the notification process for us to know when you guys are voting on things that really impact our personal? Like we park, that's, this is our part, this is where we park our cars for our house. And if Sheila hadn't called, I wouldn't be on this call. Um, and I know that we should be keeping better track of what's going on. But is there, when, when there are things that are being voted on that impact residents directly, what is the process for letting residents know or is there a process?
So we, we notified the residents that are directly affected with frontage. So that's our standard procedure. And then anyone else in the community, uh, would be notified through our, um, our, our general notifications for the agenda and items.
So are you signed up for the e-blasts? Do you get them from, uh, Daisy, from the, um, from the town about meetings?
Yes, I do, with all of my other e-blasts.
I know. It's, it's hard to get the, I mean, it's easy to get the information out there, but it's hard to get people necessarily to open it and read it. So I, I get that. There's a lot of things I just delete. I don't care what the governor does anymore. I just can't, I don't have the time.
I was saying to Mitchell earlier, like, you know, when you, when you put an addition on your house, you have to put a public notice in front of your house saying, this is happening. If you're against it, please vote. But we make these rules in town and you have to be paying attention to your email to notice. So it's an odd thing that as a resident, we have to post public notices, but as the town, we don't.
Well, but I think I just heard Matt say that we do. It's just that your house was just outside the boundary of what was directly affected. So the Dins and the Beavers both got personally notified.
Totally. I get that. But, you know.
I mean, people put a placard up for an Adu on, I don't know, Dupont, but I don't live on Dupont. I didn't, you know, I don't get noticed. I just, I might drive by and see it. Uh, it's hard. I've, you know.
Heard. I think the thing that I'm saying is it's not just impacting, yes, it impacts me. But there's a lot of people who walk these paths. So you would probably have a lot more input into this conversation if there was something posted, because there's a lot of people who would have opinions about it. Maybe we don't want to invite those opinions. But I certainly, when I'm walking around the neighborhood and see the postings of people making additions or whatever, I pay attention to them. So it's just an interesting way to communicate beyond email.
Well, it has definitely been a while since it went through the, the, um, to the mobility and traffic committee. So I think, uh, the discussion probably is, you know, kind of, um, old and people aren't paying attention to it. So, um, you know, I, I somewhat agree with you, Daisy, that we could have maybe done a better job at getting the word out that this has started up again.
Thank you so much.
Can we go back to a question then? And I'm, I'm not asking to put any of the three residents who've been nice enough to come in and, and share their viewpoint so far. But to the stop sign question, it, to the degree that any of the Beavers, Dins or Daisy want to, uh, weigh in, is the stop sign, you know, point number five I've been putting in an always stop sign, is that something that would you think would be, you'd be in favor of or not? Or, you know, if we're recommending putting this back to the traffic and mobility committee, I'd be curious just what your thoughts are initially.
Uh, this is Fred Beavers. Um, I, I think it's a good idea, but, uh, I wouldn't vote for it. Um, I would side with speed humps.
Yeah, my, my, my worry would be that, um, in the area, you know, coming from the direction of Connecticut Avenue on Carroll, if you're picking up speed and you come around the fine, you know, that, the end of that curve and you see the stop sign, you're either going to cruise it or, you know, slam your brakes on. And I don't know, it's, it's a funny spot for, I think it's a funny spot for a stop sign going both directions on the circle. And we're not against speed bumps. We're not against, uh, another, a review, a more, um, methodical review of the traffic patterns and concerns with data. But, um, I'm not, I'm not like all in on this, on the stop sign right, right away.
Matt, do you happen to recall off the top of your head how far back a speed hump should be from an intersection? Is it 200 feet?
Correct. It's 200 feet. And then also you'll want a distance of usually 400 feet between speed humps. Um.
Didn't we change that on Armory Avenue? Didn't, aren't they a little?
Yeah, I mean, we, we never follow the manual on traffic. Um.
Well, we try to. Let's not say we never do. We try to, but we also try to be, um.
It's very difficult on residential streets, especially on an older town with, with, you know, the length of some of our blocks. And, and, um, I mean, we do the best we can, but the analysis that Joe's able to put together will give us a lot of information. You know, specifically related to speeds and, um, I, Dr. Beaver specifically, I want to, if, if, if you want to meet onsite, I'd be more than happy to. Uh, and I can actually have our traffic engineer meet with us as well if you have any questions for him. So.
I think if I could say one more thing regarding speed humps and, you know, Fred and Cynthia both brought up, this is Sheila, by the way. By the very nature of the circle, there's sight issues all the way around. So if you're coming from that intersection of Baltimore, you're already not seeing the, you know, around the bend where, you know, there might be kids coming off, you know, off the hill or, you know, you're already not seeing everything. So the idea of, of two speed bumps placed between that Baltimore intersection and the Hadley intersection at those, you know, two key spots is a real valid one because that's the natural place where people are kind of, they're going downhill. They're kind of cruising, but the sightlines aren't there to begin with as you go around that way. And, and that's one, you know, I'm looking out my window right now at that, thinking of, of how many, how many pedestrians are in that area usually where as you're coming around the curves, you might, you just might need to be reminded to slow down. And it's, that's what speed bumps do. They just remind you.
Well, it'd be helpful to have one before the basketball who I guess the cost Whitney's house.
Slash the sledding, you know, the sledding.
And the sledding, yeah.
And there's a new round of young kids, you know, there's always a, a new generations, you know, kind of coming up. And, and, uh, you know, again with COVID with, you know, different, different living patterns. So.
Right.
I think, I think, uh, I think a, a new analysis would definitely be real helpful for all of us. And, uh, you know, again, it's not the highest, highest traffic area in the, in the place, but it, it's key to the, the town rhythm.
Well, I think, uh, I'm, I'm fine with refreshing this to make sure that, um, you know, that we have the analysis, uh, the data that Matt, maybe you can meet with, uh, Dr. Beavers and, and Sheila and any other, um, people, uh, that want to join you with Joe. Uh, if we can find a time in a day that works for everybody, maybe early in the morning or something. And I think that would be helpful. So, uh, this, yes, I'm sorry.
Hi, this is Alan Simon. I just wanted to jump in on the stop sign question on Calver Place. I actually think if we were going to do something to improve the visibility, the always stop sign would be a better solution than the speed humps. Um, because, and I, I'll typically be coming up Hadley, you know, north on Hadley. And if the problem that is visibility, at least having the always stop sign, you know, knowing that the car is coming from your left to right, either you're going to see them or not, because there's a stop sign would be a dramatic improvement. I mean, to me, having a speed hump halfway around the circle isn't going to really address the visibility issue if you're driving up Hadley or walking up Hadley, um, as much as an always stop sign would. I think, I'm not saying they're mutually exclusive, but the speed hump would not address the visibility issue.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Okay. Well, the council, do you want? Okay. Well, the council, do you want to, I think, as I said, I think we definitely need to get the trees trimmed and then have Matt meet with the, the residents with Joe Cuthro out there. And let's relook at this issue. I think everybody needs to be refreshed on what the options are. Unless you want to go in another direction.
I think it makes sense to re-table it and then, or push it then after that happens to the Mobility and Traffic Committee, or do we just come back and?
I think, I think right now we can just table the, the resolution and we may end up going with something different after it's, after we've looked at it. So we can just table it.
So
Yeah.
Staff requested council just continue the resolution until additional analysis can be done of the intersection.
Okay. So you just want to motion for that? Okay. Someone who went, meant to make a motion?
What was the word you said, Matt, to what?
Continue.
Discontinue.
Continue.
Continue. I'll move to continue resolution zero six, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So move on to number seven.
Hey, Mayor Council, Resolution number R dash zero seven dash twenty twenty-two is a resolution of the Mayor and Town Council of Kensington approving a variance to encroach one foot, six inches into the required twenty foot sum of the side yard setback for dwelling on land zone for single family use at thirty-nine oh six Washington Street. The variance hearing was held last month on February fourteenth. And staff needed time to draft the resolution for approval this evening.
Council, any questions? And this, we had the hearing last month, so that's closed. I don't think we got any comments, did we?
We received no additional comments after the meeting, though.
Okay. So we would just need a motion to approve.
Should I move that we approve Resolution number R dash zero seven dash twenty twenty-two?
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Okay, number eight.
Okay, Mayor Council Resolution number R dash zero eight dash twenty twenty-two is a resolution of the Mayor and Town Council of Kensington to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, FY twenty-two. That's our current fiscal year. Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, to move two hundred thousand dollars from the storm drain reconstruction renovation program, P W dash zero zero five in the CIP plan to the pavement management program, P W dash zero zero three. In the allocation of funding last year that the council approved for the N Z I contract, we allocated six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the pavement management and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to storm drain management. We're a little behind on where we thought we would be with storm drain analysis at this time. So I'm requesting the council to transfer two hundred thousand dollars from that allocation over to pavement management, which will allow us to do a little more paving than we had planned while we're kind of figuring everything out on the storm drain side. So this, the change is within the CIP program of funds that were already allocated by the council last summer.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. Anyone in the audience have a question? Let's see any hands? Do we have a motion?
Sure. I'll move that we adopt Resolution R dash zero eight dash twenty twenty-two to amend fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two capital improvement plan, the CIP budget move two hundred thousand dollars from storm drain reconstruction and renovation program line P W zero zero five to the pavement management program line P W dash zero zero three.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We had a lot on the agenda tonight, but we got it through pretty quickly. So I want to thank everybody for a, a good meeting and I just need a motion to adjourn.
Come on, Bridget.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Except for Nate, we'll see you all on April eleventh. Sorry, Nate, you're going to miss the budget. You can send your notes.
On Zoom.
Yeah, you could actually, I think you can zoom in, didn't we?
Yeah, we're testing the hybrid approach.
Yeah, you should be able to zoom in. So, good. All right. Excellent.
All right. Designated survivor.
Yeah.
Oh, God. What a positive way to end the, end the meeting tonight. Thank you. All right, guys. See y'all.
Night, guys.
Good night. Much.